This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, everyone. I hereby open the regular session of the planning commission.
I ask everyone to turn their mics off except for Sophie, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I hereby open the regular session of the planning commission and could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner McGinley.
Present.
Commissioner Landon.
Present.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Coivilla.
Here.
Commissioner Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Salazar.
Present.
Thank you. That's roll call.
Thank you, Brenda.
You're very welcome.
And now we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. I will be there and ask everybody else to be on mute. I believe, are we putting the flag up?
Yeah, Brenda needs to make me a presenter. Brenda, can you make me a presenter?
Brenda, FYI, your mic is muted.
You should have it, Sandy, now.
All right, there we go. And I will begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indefensible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. There is one time designated for public testimony this evening, just business from the audience, which is not a time for anyone to speak to the planning commission on any subject, which is a time for anyone to speak to the planning commission on any subject that is not the master plan modification on our agenda tonight. If you are joining us online and wish to speak, please use the chat window. It looks like a speech balloon in the upper right corner. Please send a comment to the organizer with your name, mailing address, and the subject you would like to speak about. You can select the organizer, in quotes, at the bottom of the chat window. I will call on you when it is your turn to speak. For people calling in by phone, we will announce the time for those on the phone to speak. If you do not wish to speak, just state that you do not want to speak. Brenda, do we have anybody wishing to speak?
No, we don't, not tonight.
Great, thank you. Do I have any adjustments to the agenda?
None.
Great. Okay, and with that, it looks like we can call this agenda item. So I'll call the agenda item, the Markola Meadows Final Master Plan Modification, case 811-20-000225-TYP3. I'll begin by asking commissioners to disclose expertise contacts or conflicts of interest. And I'll call you one by one to disclose. I'll start with myself, Chair McGinley. I have no expertise conflicts and no, or no expertise contacts and no conflicts of interest. Vice Chair Landon.
I also have no expertise contacts nor conflicts of interest.
Thank you. Commissioner Gill.
I have no expertise contacts and no conflicts of interest.
Thank you. And Commissioner Coivilla.
Could you put me to the end of the queue, please, Chair?
Sure. I will go over to Commissioner Bergen.
I have no expertise contacts, however, I have a potential conflict of interest being a residential Realtor, excuse me, a practicing Realtor, residential and commercial, and a homeowner in the general vicinity.
Thank you. Commissioner Salazar.
I have neither expertise contacts nor conflicts of interest.
Thank you. And revisiting Commissioner Coivilla.
No expertise contact and no conflicts of interest.
Thank you. This is a reminder to everyone listening that the public hearing was closed at the last meeting, which was held on January 20th, 2021. The public record was closed to the public on January 27th and to the applicant on February 3rd, and that information is in the packet for tonight. Is there any commission discussion of the application, or are we ready for a motion?
I have some comments.
Go ahead, Commissioner Coivilla.
Yes, I've looked pretty carefully at the proposal, and I have a number of issues with it. Primarily to me is the change in the storm drainage plan. The previously approved plan had a natural lowbank vegetated meandering swale, which kind of served as a park in the area, which provided better filtration, cleaner water, and cleaner air, as well as much better aesthetics. The new design maintains the existing ditch, which currently doesn't well treat the existing storm drain or adequately at present prevents flooding from what we heard from our staff member or our staff last time. Additional, with the buildout of the Markola Meadows, we can expect additional non-point pollution and runoff that will be due to the increased vehicles and also to lawn maintenance chemicals, which we can expect to be used. So I think that the performance of the system with the redesign will be less than optimal. Secondary is a major change to my mind that I do not like is the change in the Markola road design. The previous design had a fairly large right-of-way take from the subject property with an access frontage road for the properties to the south side of Markola and a roundabout. There's also a tree-lined aesthetically pleasurable design with a parkway-like feel. The new design is just basically intensification of traffic without apparent increase in additional capacity or improvements. The traffic plan has explained to us that the existing roadway system has adequate capacity for this buildout. But the way I look at it from this change from the nodal development we had with businesses and dwellings with a walkable and bikeable neighborhood where perhaps people would live and work in the same areas, that I think turning it into a bedroom community, which is what this really does, will have traffic rushing in and out a couple of times a day. And so I don't believe that the traffic analysis really addresses that. In addition, the the school site, I really believe, is poorly chosen. It will result in like 15 or 20 mile an hour zone across a large portion of Markola Road for the majority of weekdays during school. And that, I believe that schools really should belong on smaller roadways and not arterials. If we look at Yolanda and Two Rivers Schools in our areas, those are good locations. If we look at Holt Elementary on Harlow Road with its quarter-mile-long, 20 mile an hour traffic zone, I think that's a bad location. Also, the state of Oregon and the city of Springfield and Eugene both have invested heavily in what's called Safe Rock to Schools. Safe Rock to Schools is not merely that we have a 15 mile an hour zone during school time. It's Safe Rock to Schools standards say that schools should be, the areas around schools should be safe 24/7, 365. And I don't believe that locating a school on a Markola Road is a good use either. In addition, I believe we're going to have a considerable holdup in the area due to what parents usually do, which is drop off and pick up their traffic, pick up students. So I think that'll negatively affect traffic. Thirdly, and this may be the most important of all, is the change from that live-work nodal design, which we apparently accomplished through the zone change. And changing this to a bedroom community will result in more concentrated traffic, less walkability and bike-friendly, and more danger to pedestrians, bikes, children, et cetera, using, who are brave enough to use these facilities. It's, if we look at this development with the stand, with what we see in front of us, which is large, single-family residence area, apartment structures, a convenience store, school, and a church, to me, that this design looks like a relic of what I'd call previous land planning that we know has not really done a lot for us in the past, or we understand that land planning needs to be done better than we've done it in the past. And this, to me, is, as I said, a relic. Fourth, I would say that, and this is the last one, although we get a large amount of housing with this design, there's really, there's, has been no affordable housing included in it. And I really feel that any development of size in Springfield should address affordable housing. Therefore, to me, this design does not meet community standards. To conclude, I urge my fellow commissioners to deny this application, return it to the applicant, and await a design that addresses these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coivilla. So I was looking through the packet just to try to address some specific criteria of approval and findings. And I thought it might be helpful if we talked through those. So the first one that you mentioned was the drainage ditch plan, which is criteria of approval F, which you'll find on page 12 of our packet. Just going up to that right now. Could we go there on the shared screen, please, Cindy? It's page nine of 20 of that first attachment, and then page 12 on the PDF. Commissioner Coivilla, were there specific findings that you wanted to discuss concerning that, where I thought there may be, was like finding 47, which was recently added that specifically discusses the ditch?
No, actually, I feel as if the entire project, although it may meet existing standards, I think that we, as a commission, can say that we expect these, that we expect a better job from this development and expect a higher standard. That's my conclusion.
Did staff want to address any things that were brought up by Commissioner Coivilla?
Just, I guess, just in response to the concerns, the developer has set the stage for this type of land use configuration through the metroplan amendment and zone change process. So the location of the school is somewhat fixed based on the previous actions that were taken. It will not derive access from Markola Road. So it will have, I guess, a side exposure of the schoolyard to Markola Road. But I would not expect that there would be a school zone along Markola Road. It would be on V Street, which would be the main access along the frontage on the west side of the school district, the school building and site there. So there are some ways that traffic and, I guess, neighborhood access can be mitigated. It is a different configuration of the neighborhood. This is what this property owner is proposing. It does change significantly from the prior vision. However, staff is not in the driver's seat for this. We are responding to the applicant's change of vision. And so they've undertaken the metroplan amendment and zone change that we saw previously in order to make these changes to their master plan, which sort of fall out of that. So to revisit the configuration of the land uses on the site would potentially require some adjustments to the zoning and the types of patterns of land use that have been established through the planning commission's prior review and the city council's approval of that metroplan amendment and zone change. So we're, I guess, down the road, so to speak, on some of the land use configuration. As far as built form, there is opportunity to look at transportation improvements, stormwater facility improvements. Those are not reliant upon the zoning, per se. But the arrangement of uses that have been established through these prior land use actions is less flexible in this case. There is room for variation to the stormwater facilities that were described by Commissioner Coivilla, more of a meandering stormwater, open space pattern in the neighborhood. That is something that could be contemplated. That's not what was proposed, and so that's what staff is responding to. We are presenting the developer's vision. And so it's not necessarily up to staff to try to impose these changes. It would be conditions of approval arising from this master plan modification in order to affect some of the changes, should the planning commission wish to do so.
I'd like to go ahead and respond to that. I do understand that the zone change was a big part of what we are looking at now. However, I think that there, and without getting really burying myself in the weeds, I'd like to say that what I'd like to see as a planning commissioner for what I think is the better good of the community would be a return to as nearly as possible to the issues that I spoke of, which was better improvements to Markola Road, better storm drain system, returning very close to what we had in our last approved design. And I, again, I'd really like to see some affordable housing on the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy and Commissioner Coivilla. Do I have any other comments from other commissioners?
If I may, I happen to agree with Commissioner Coivilla, but I'm not, you know, is that something that we can require of builder? If you're meeting home.
If I can answer your question, Commissioner Landon, your decision has to be backed by findings that address the criteria of approval. So if you make findings addressing the criteria of approval, then that, that's what's needed to legally support your decision. So I would encourage you to discuss any changes that you might wish to see to the findings. I heard Commissioner Coivilla say that he thinks that the standards are met, but that the quality isn't high enough. So I would just ask for some more discussion on that. I think that these are discretionary standards to a large degree. There's discretion in finding whether or not they're met. But the decision does have to be addressed at the standards and criteria of approval. It can't be the planning commission's discretion outside of those standards and criteria, if that makes sense. I'm happy to answer any other questions that there's follow-up to that.
Thank you, Christina. As Christina mentioned, there's words like sufficient that we could discuss. If we would like to, if we'd like to discuss the Markola Road improvement, if we would like to discuss the storm drainage system. From my review of the criteria of approval, I don't see anything that could include affordable housing. I always think it's good to encourage it. And as Christina mentioned, we're limited. I understand Commissioner Coivilla's frustration. He and I both voted against the zone change or the removal of the overlay before. And from my review, I see all of the criteria met, and I'm open to discussion about the subjective criteria and see a lot of thoughtful conditions of approval from staff. So I commend staff for going through this and and proposing all the conditions of approval. Do I hear any discussion? If I don't hear a discussion, do I hear a motion? Commissioner Gill.
Hi, thank you. So I, from my reading of this and what the staff proposed as conditions of approval, I felt that it met the criteria that we need to follow. I am interested in the storm drain issue. I think that that's important. So if there could be more conversation on the criteria where we could, you know, where we could do some of that more qualitative conversation, I'm very open to that conversation. I'm just not, I can't think of how to do that on here, but it does seem like an area that could have the possibility for some more of that qualitative reflection based on the criteria. So I'm open if people have thoughts of where we could pull that out and think about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Gill. Any discussion or thoughts on exploring finding further conditions of approval, sorry, the criteria of approval and the findings? They first appear under availability of public utilities, and it looks like we would be exploring if there's sufficient capacity to support the proposed development. Okay, hearing no discussion, would anybody like to propose a motion?
If I may.
Go ahead, Commissioner Landon.
I moved to adopt the planning commission order in the agenda packet for this item as attachment five.
Do we hear a second? I'll second. I heard Commissioner Bergen, so Commissioner Landon made the motion, and Commissioner Bergen seconded, and I will do a roll call vote. I'll start with myself. Chair McGinley, aye. Vice Chair Landon.
Aye.
Commissioner Gill.
Aye.
Commissioner Coivilla.
No.
Commissioner Bergen.
Aye.
Commissioner Salazar.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Motion passes. All right, and thank you, Andy, for all your work on this application. From there, do we have any reports of city council meetings?
Commissioner Coivilla here. I attended the city council meeting last night. The first part was a work session, which was interviewing interim counselors for proposed counselors for Ward One to take the place of Sean Van Gordon, who's now our mayor. Four of the eight were interviewed: Kelly Mason, Michelle Weber, Thomas Lawrence, and Raymond Soot. And they will interview another four folks next week and are slated to make their decision on that interim appointment March 1st. Then during the regular session, there was a discussion of the budget and then a lot of council information regarding El Rapa Affordable Housing Consortium. And that was also a project for the Main Street pedestrian crossings was accepted, which is apparently the last pedestrian crossing. This was about it. I believe it was about at 66th and Main Street, the last pedestrian crossing that is figured on the first part of Main Street Safety. And then there was a discussion regarding the budget committee. That was last night.
Thank you, Commissioner Coivilla. I see Commissioner Salazar.
Yeah, I attended the April 8th city council work session, and that session was really focused on the council vacancy for Ward One that Commissioner Coivilla mentioned, and just discussing the outreach opportunities and how to go about inviting questions from the public for regarding those applicants. And they discussed the interview structure and questions. And as Commissioner Coivilla mentioned, they elected to have interviews over the course of two work sessions this past week's and the next work session. And will be holding, there'll be opportunity for public comment on the next city council meeting on March 1st, and with deliberations and proposed vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Salazar. I have a, I guess, not really a report of council action, but they were all in the video. The Springfield State of the City address by Mayor Van Gordon was released today. It's on the City of Springfield YouTube channel. It can also be reached through the main page, it's the Springfield webpage. And I love the State of the City address because it really allows us to look back on a year. And 2020 certainly was a year to look back on and learn from and hopefully move on from. So I encourage everybody to watch it. It was very well done. Do we have any business from members of the planning commission? Let's see, Commissioner Gill.
So this is just an offer, so everybody can disregard if you want to. But there's a project that I worked on through my job, but it is very much related to city planning. We developed a model process for disaster preparedness and resilience planning for heritage resources. And it's about taking all the heritage resources in a community and doing a joint plan together with them. And then we created a guidebook for other communities about how to do that. We did this model with City of Cottage Grove because they have a variety of resources, including a historic downtown in Main Street, a couple of museums, historical society, genealogical society, historic cemeteries. So we wanted to get the breadth of organizations participating in it. And they adopted it as a sub-plan of their natural hazards mitigation plan, which I think is kind of an interesting approach. And DLCD is Department of Land Conservation and Development is pretty interested in it in their natural hazards mitigation planning process. So if anybody wanted to, in future work session, have that presented and have a little conversation about either the historic stuff or just disaster planning in general, which I think is really important and interesting for us to have a conversation and think about, I'm happy to share that.
Thank you, Commissioner Gill. Speaking for myself, I would love for that to be a work session item. Commissioner Salazar is new, but we got this really cool series that Sandy put together where we just had a like fall twenty eighteen, early twenty nineteen educational work sessions that were awesome and I would love to bring that back. And if anybody would like to voice their support, I'm sure you can email Sandy, give a little wave here. That's very interesting. Thank you for sharing. I have an event I would like to share. It's at the University of Oregon and I can send this to Brenda Sandy to send out to everybody. It's a conversation with Richard Rothstein, who is the author of The Color of Law. It's a book that explores the history of zoning and the history of exclusion through zoning and other practices. It will be held Wednesday, February twenty fourth from twelve thirty PM to one thirty PM virtually. And it's free and through the U of O, so I'll distribute that. We have any other business from planning commission?
I've got two items. First of all, I asked Brenda to send out a link today, which I'm sure that our chair knows about, which is a information page and a survey that was put together by the city of Eugene for studying middle housing. And they don't require, they do require you to register, but they don't require you to be a city of Eugene resident to participate in the survey. And it was very informational. And since we are people that perhaps know more about the middle housing issue than others, I think it would be worth our while to, I have. But those of you who wish to participate in the survey, I would recommend it. I thought it was very well put together page. The other item I have is that I attended a meeting for, it was actually intended to be a meeting for landowners along Main Street as part of the Main Street Safety Project on the ninth of February. ODOT, our staff and DKS consultants put it together. And what it was, was I just observed it, but it was basically to look at what the interim design kind of was for different areas. I attended the twenty eighth through twenty eighth, twenty first through twenty eighth street portion of it. And, and to listen to feedback from property owners along there. It was very well put together and our Molly Marcarian said that it was okay for us to attend if we wanted to attend other meetings of that in the future. I'd recommend it. It is, however, for the property owners and not for us to weigh in on our opinions, et cetera. So if you want to know what the property owners think about the design and what the preliminary design looks like, to me, it was a very valuable meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Quibla. Any other business from the planning commission? All right. I lost my script for a moment. Do we have any business from the development and public works department?
Evening commissioners, my name is Sandy Belson. I'm the comprehensive planning manager. I don't have any specific agenda item. I just want to give you a preview of what your upcoming meetings will be. So this is our last meeting using the go to meeting platform. So as you recall, last time we talked that we are going to be switching over to Zoom meeting. It will be a little different than the city council version. Council is using the Zoom webinar. So we are having a practice, you all had agreed to have a practice meeting using Zoom at your next meeting, which is March second. So six PM, we'll have a work session and we'll be able to try it out. It has some more features than go to meeting does. And we want to make sure you're comfortable using that and we'll set up some protocols for the commission in doing that. And then later that month, Mark Rust will be coming to do a work session with you on the middle housing, how that's being incorporated into the housing code update and also progress on the employment portion of that development code update. And then later on, you'll hear, I think that we have you scheduled for Molly Marcarian to come to you and tell you more about the main street, but that'll be later this year. Any questions about anything with the city, the department or what I, we have coming up? All right, well, have a great evening and we look forward to seeing you through Zoom next time.
All right, I adjourn this planning commission meeting. Have a great evening, everybody.
Good night.
You too, Sophie.
Good night.
Good night.